Good morning and welcome to our July 21 Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to remind you of the restrictions that we have in place at this time. And it's a momentous occasion this morning when we have the opportunity to add a Commissioner to our Board. It's really gonna, it really does my heart good to see for the first time in many months, we will have seven Commissioners sitting here. We certainly, our hearts are still heavy on the ones that we have lost to cause these vacancies. But at this time, I do want to recognize our County Manager Craig Honeycutt to do the introductions, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to bring up Mr. Freeman Hardison Jr. and his lovely wife. And also, he has asked our Audible Representative John Bell to swear him in today. So I will turn that over to you.
Where do you want the...
That down, okay. Yeah.
The posse should be there. I, Freeman Hardison Jr., do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution of Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the Wayne County Board of Commissioners, so help me God.
I do.
I, Freeman Hardison Jr., do solemnly swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of Wayne County Commissioner according to the best of my skill and ability, according to the law, so help me God.
I do.
Commissioner Hardison now. Congratulations. And on behalf of the citizens of District 4, we're honored to have you as our Commissioner and look forward to working with you. And I will give you the piece of advice I gave my father-in-law after his swearing in. The swearing is over, now the swearing out will officially begin. But thank you for everything that you've done and we'll do, we'll look forward to serving this with the Wayne County together.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Freeman, you know where your seat is, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have you got your name, please? You got your name?
Yep, we do.
Okay, good.
You're all set.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Is anybody, before we go into our other session, any Commissioners have any comments you'd like to make?
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Happy to be here. Now, after the day, I'm not sure if I'll be happy or not, but we'll see.
Yeah, you'll stay happy. This is a good group to work with. Don't always agree on the first round, but somewhere down the road, we'll see if we can get there.
Yes, sir.
I do want to take this opportunity just to, you know, in a way, sort of personally welcome Freeman. His district extends into Mount Olive, and our people in Mount Olive are looking forward to being able to interact with you. And we do appreciate very much being able to work with him and made it possible for him to be part of this continuum because it's an important role. And people around Mount Olive is real persnickety about making sure they're representing. I'll just leave it at that.
What was that word again? Persnickety? Sneaky?
I think that's a good word.
Can you spell it?
No, I know how to use a lot of them. I don't know how to spell many of them.
Just one people, they have a friend.
I stopped by yesterday and talked to Freeman just briefly, and I said, "Son, you hadn't raised your hand yet, but you have now, it's too late, dude."
You know, remarkable. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, man. Good to be here.
Congratulations. We've talked many, many times, served on a few boards together.
Yes, sir, we have.
Looking forward to working with you. After today, congratulations is in order, but there would be some days where you might want to say condolences, like I did. You know, sometimes you have those days. Thank you, Representative Bell, for coming and sharing this with us. I'll thank you so much. Any other? Okay. All right, we're going to call our Board of Commissioners Agenda Meeting to Order, and we have the invocation by Mr. Cromarty, the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Dodd Hattori, approval of the minutes, and discussion and adjustment of the agenda. Mr. Honeycutt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have two items we would like to add under New Business. These are coming at the recommendation of the Board of Elections. Number one is a recommendation from the Board of Elections to enter into a contact or contract with Mr. Dane Beavers to consult with Wayne County for the 2020 election cycle. That amount is not to exceed $30,000. And number two, there's been a request to change a job classification and salary for Ms. Hinson, and that was a recommendation by the Board of Elections. But that will be under New Business right after the Consent Agenda.
Under... Whoops. They have to create a new...
We're going to have to create one?
Yes, sir. Create new business?
Yes, sir.
All right.
And that is all I have at this time.
We don't have, yeah, we've got some budget amendments left.
Yes, sir. But, oh, we'll go ahead and go with the rest of it. First, we'll have a special presentation. Number one is motion to adopt Resolution 2020-26, a resolution honoring the 100th birthday of Mr. Woodrow Anderson. And Commissioner Acock will have, would like to read that resolution, I believe.
Yes, sir, if that's all right with you. Yes, it is.
Yes, sir.
Then after that, the family will be here for the presentation. At 9:00, we do have a public hearing, a public hearing to receive public comments regarding a proposed resolution making certain findings and determinations regarding the financing of capital improvements pursuant to an installment financing agreement requesting the local government commission to approve such financing agreement. Again, this is looking, as we've talked about over the last couple of budget years, this would be financing the 911 Center, financing the radio project, financing our software for finance. So this is something will help our cash flow and our fund balance as we pay cash for all these items so far. Ted Colby-Davenport will be here. He was actually in the area, so we've asked him to come to the meeting. And so if you have any specific questions about where we're at as far as our debt service, Ted will be here and he'll be able to answer those questions.
I do have a memo that Davenport's prepared that kind of summarizes the RFPs that we received from the different financial institutions and gives you what the recommendation is along with the document that will be representative for the public hearing. So I'll give you that memo between the 8:00 and 9:00 session for you to have while he kind of goes over it.
Okay. Then our second public hearing will be on to receive comments, or it's the second public hearing to receive public comments on a proposed franchise for North State Investment Group, which is North State Medical Transport and Medex Medical Transport to furnish non-emergency medical transport and other medical transport as required. Again, this is due to the county getting out of the non-emergency transport business. We had originally set limits on the hours of operations with our first franchise agreement, but we will remove those hours of operation, but also allow a second franchise to help fill in the gap because it will be necessary to have two to provide that service within the county. And then we'll have public comments. And then under Consent Agenda, applications for elderly or disabled exclusion, they have been reviewed by staff and recommended. Applications for disabled veteran exclusion, they have been reviewed and recommended by staff. And number three is our all-famous budget amendment.
It's a little lighter today, if that encourages you. On page 44, beginning with the first budget amendment, which is number 681.
Wait a minute.
Sure.
Our page numbers is not showing up very well.
Hold on.
It's a little faded down there at the bottom.
We're getting a new copy. They're scheduled for this week, I believe.
What was the number of page?
The first one was what number?
44, page 44. The description on it says FEMA slash COVID-19.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. I got it.
Okay, is everybody, is everybody good with me to proceed?
And Allison, page 44 shows that fine.
Okay, so your first budget amendment is for the FEMA and COVID-19 line item. So I think this is the third budget amendment we've done for this. This is just a part of us wrapping up our year-end and accumulating all expenditures, which this will be a receivable because we've not received any money from FEMA yet. So in total, we have requested from FEMA $225,841.59 for the COVID-19 pandemic.
Give me that number one more time.
$225,841.59 will be our total 19-20 accumulation of COVID expenditures that we're requesting from FEMA. And so this is separate from the CARES funding. We've been asked by the state to request reimbursement from FEMA first and then to spend down our CARES money. So that's what we're doing. We're going to request from FEMA, and then basically what they reject, we'll turn around and request reimbursement from CARES funding. And so we've got someone that fills out all that paperwork for us and makes sure all of that's, you know, detailed to the line item in case they have any questions. So I'll keep you posted on how that reimbursement process is going.
And this is, this is an ongoing thing?
Yes, sir.
Going into another year, this is ongoing?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Yes. Is there any particular reason why the date here is 6:30?
Yes. So this, this is a budget amendment from our prior fiscal year. So after our last meeting that we had, we had, we realized we had additional accumulated expenditures that needed to be reimbursed from FEMA. So when we do our cleanup during fiscal year-end, we're doing journal entries to move expenditures to the right places and things like that, and we discover some additional COVID expenditures. So we want to make sure we get those reimbursed.
All right. So in receiving these dollars, you're putting it into...
Last year.
Last year.
That's right. But it's actually a receivable because we've not received it yet.
Okay.
But yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So your next budget amendment is on page 46. It's number two, which is a low number because that's the, that's the number two for the new fiscal year. This is from Cooperative Extension, and they are requesting to reappropriate funds in the amount of $51,933.95. And so, Mr. Hardison, I'll give you a little, a little tutorial on our reappropriations. If monies are not spent at June 30 from the prior fiscal year, and they were, they just weren't spent for various reasons and need to be carried forward, we do what we call as a reappropriation. And so we, you will see that it's, it's fund balance appropriated because in the prior fiscal, fiscal year, that money would have rolled into our fund balance. So we appropriate it out of our fund balance and then put it in the right line items. And so for this particular department, they've received revenues from various programs, but I feel like probably due to COVID-19, they weren't able to carry out a lot of those expenditures and programs, so they're, they're bringing those forward to hopefully spend this year.
Okay, thank you.
Your next budget amendment is number three on page 48 for Facilities. This is another reappropriation. It's actually for the detention center. Facilities is, is working on installing it. The detention center is in need of new shower pans, and the Board approved that this past fiscal year, but they've had a lot of trouble, I think, sizing the actual, you know, showers, and it's, and so they haven't been able to complete the project. So I think they've reached a solution and should be able to spend that in this fiscal year, but they're requesting to move those monies forward so they can.
I thought we had seen that before.
Yes.
That was a question, Mark, and it hasn't risen again.
Yes, I think they, I think they've had a hard time with this one.
They have. There's been problems with the vendors, there's been problems with COVID, there's been problems with getting it sized. It's just been problems all around, but I think Kendall's got a solution now to get it fixed.
Well, they, they just can't go to Lowe's and buy a shower. I mean, this is, this is...
Yes, sir.
Whole different ballgame.
It is.
I just remember I'd seen it before and thought it was a lot of money.
So your, our last budget amendment is on page 50. It's number five for County Capital Projects, our 911 Center specifically. We are requesting to transfer $20,000 to the 911 Center budget. This represents architectural fees. The original construction management agreement with Stuart Cooper Newell was set to complete in May, but that project is now expected to be completed in September. And so additional fees have been incurred for them to continue the construction management for, for the completion of the project. In addition to that, they bill us, so they bill us a certain fee per month, and then they bill us for reimburseables, which are things like travel expenses. So I've put a little bit of contingency in there for the reimburseables, just so I don't have to bring another one to you, but this is what we're anticipating to get us through the life of the project, if there are no additional change orders.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes, sir.
I do think we need some clarification on this, you know, because the project was, you know, May, not September. We need some clarification on why, why that much of a delay.
A lot of it is COVID. A lot of it is we added Mission Critical, the piece of Mission Critical back in, and there was some additional cost and time associated with review of the project for Mission Critical. And the 911.
And, well, right, and I know dealing with them.
Yes, sir.
But my understanding is we've got, we've got more in that building than we had anticipated or had planned for. Is that part of the delay, too?
I think it's...
Some of IT stuff.
I don't know if that's caused any of the delay, but I do know that part of the Mission Critical thing and the review, the, you know, once we accepted the grant from the state and I'm one, Mission Critical added additional steps and reviews that also caused problems and issues as well.
And the weather.
And the weather. Okay, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm having questions on, from people in the community, in the county, and I just, I want, if they're watching, I want them to know why this is, this has dragged on longer than what we had anticipated. I'm not complaining.
No, 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 no. Yes, sir.
I just, I just want the people to know...
Yes, sir.
Why this is taking longer than it, than we had anticipated.
Yes, sir.
And because, and because this is a debt finance project, as you recall, we moved this to be a debt finance project, I will request reimbursement from our debt financing for this additional money.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Charlie. I, too, have got some questions on this. If you're an architect, then you're getting a percentage of the construction cost at eight and a half percent, or 8.25. Why would we actually have to pay monies if the project is extended for a few months? Because their fee was based upon a percentage of construction cost.
They were told that the construction would be completed at a certain time, and I think, as the manager has told you, with Mission Critical in there, came in late instead of early on, that has extended the time.
But, but still, the work that they have got to do, I mean, they're, they're taking it on a contingency, basically. They're taking it on a percentage of the construction cost. In the contract, was there provisions that if it extended beyond the date of anticipated completion, that they would be paid additional funds?
That would be additional, additional fees. Yes, sir.
That doesn't seem quite right because a lot of projects would extend beyond the anticipated completion date. So they're getting their percentage for the entire project, and if there's any additional cost of construction, then they're getting an 8.25 percentage on those dollars. So I'm not quite understanding why they would receive additional dollars because the project was extended. That brings up another, a good question. If we had finished it in March, would they give us money back?
No.
Oh, absolutely not.
And also, I think if, if the project was delayed because of COVID-19, we should get compensation back from that. I mean, you know, time extended. Say if it's been one month, we should be one or two months, two or three months extended, and that would take us into that September timeframe and not be charged additional fees on it.
Right. I do believe the biggest issue has been the Mission Critical piece and the $1.2 million grant because there was some, you know, there was pieces that Mission Critical added back into the project that then became reviewed by Stuart Cooper Newell that were not part of the original design. So there was additional time that Stuart Cooper Newell had to put into the project that was not anticipated on the front end.
Still don't quite understand, though, why they would be getting paid additional dollars that went beyond the, the completion date. I've never heard that before. I mean, generally, you get a percentage for an architect. You don't get a fee per month.
Right. I, I do think it's really the Mission Critical piece and the additional meetings that have been required because of the additional requirements of the grant, and meeting with Mission Critical was over and beyond their initial rec, or their initial proposal when they, the contract was signed.
Yeah, but... Mr. World brought up a good point, too. If COVID-19 is part of the holdup, can we not file that on our...
If I could, if I can get some documentation, I'm willing to try.
I think we need to.
I think it's reasonable.
That's reasonable. What do you think? I think we have to.
I think we should explore it.
Right, we can.
Can we pull this until you do some exploring on this?
We can.
Give us a little bit more information.
We can pull it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I mean, I agree. Is that okay with everybody?
I agree because I'm...
I just don't think it's fair that they're getting a percentage of the construction cost, but also they're getting additional dollars because of delays in, in the construction, whatever they may be, whether it's weather, COVID-19, or whatever. I don't understand why they would get additional dollars.
Or if the scope of work had changed, which is what he's saying.
If I could, just to add on what everybody has said so far, so when Mission Critical came in, they actually made a lot of recommendations about redesigning some IT infrastructure and things like that. And my understanding is that created some additional work for the architect that was outside of that scope of work that was included in the contract. So what you're saying about the 8% is true, but that's based off the original scope of work. So we were actually starting to get invoices for his hourly rate for this additional work. And so what we did was we negotiated a flat rate per month for the duration of the project to try to save us a little bit of money because the work they were doing technically was outside the scope of work that was covered under the original contract. So by adding Mission Critical, we actually increased the work on the architect. So we actually were going to be billed a lot higher rate because we were going to get billed his hourly rate, which was going to add up pretty quick. So he agreed to do this flat rate for the duration of the project, which is what this amendment is now.
Let me put that in different words. We actually are better if we just approve the, a budget amendment and move on.
Yes. That's what he's saying.
But that's, that's the increase of if, if we didn't do it, if we didn't renegotiate, because I think we did an amendment to this agreement, and if we didn't do it that way, we would be stuck with his original hourly rate, which was pretty high. So we went back and just negotiated this flat fee.
But we can still explore the fact that we could reach out and maybe get COVID dollars to cover it, since I'm assuming the Board of Rallies not allowing us any additional dollars.
I'm sure there was some delays related to COVID as well, so we could try to...
I just, let's put that out there.
I'll remove my objection. I will, too.
We're not going to pull it.
No.
We're going to leave it on that.
We're going to bite our tongue and...
That's the last one, isn't it, Al?
Hello, move.
Yes, it is the last one.
All right. Next is number four, motion to adopt Resolution 2020-25, the resolution in support of the wearing of cloth face coverings to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Number five, motion to adopt Resolution 2020-27, resolution adopting the 34th Amendment to the Position, Classification, and Pay Plan for Wayne County. Basically, what this is, if the Board remembers during the budget process, we did add one position in the training QA position in 911, also the actor school coordinator position for 4H, and then we had a couple of reclassifications with Public Health and Facilities. So that just cleans up our pay and classification plan. And then number six, motion to approve short-term interfund loan for the Genoa Lift Station Project. As the Board is aware, we would receive...
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, you're moving too fast.
I'm sorry.
Let me go back to facilities on the resolution adopting pay classification or, under Facilities, maintenance tech groundkeeper. What was that position?
It, just a, is, is just a title change.
Just a title?
Title change, yes, sir. It was not a new position, it was a title change.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, my mind wasn't working as fast as yours.
No, no, I'm thinking very quick this morning, I apologize. Number six is motion to approve short-term interfund loan for the Genoa Lift Station Project. What this is, as the Board is aware, under Matthew, our Genoa pump station went out, and we got funding from Golden Leaf to complete the project and really to rebuild and replace. Finally, that project is at a end. However, we've not received our funding back from Golden Leaf yet, but we have outstanding bills, so we're going to use general fund dollars for probably 30 to 45 days at the most. And then when the Golden Leaf money comes back in, we'll replace general fund dollars with the Golden Leaf dollars.
Mr. Chairman, have we reached out to Golden Leaf to verify we're getting these dollars in the next 30?
We are all, yes, sir. Paperwork's been signed.
So they've stated they will be sending us this money back?
Yes, sir. We, we have, we have a signed agreement. We actually, and Chip did a great job on this, we had to get them to increase the amount on this project twice or three times? Twice. So it was originally 200 and something, 175,000, and it ended up being 346,000. So...
Well, how are you getting 400,000?
Well, 400,000, yeah.
What was the purpose of the increase?
Um, we originally, yeah, we originally did not design it where it needed to be. It was...
So I have a motion to go into closed session.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we are in closed session. Does anyone want to make?